Tuesday, September 1st, 2020, being held in the Microsoft Team platform via video conference. Please note, this meeting is being recorded and feeding public comment. Commissioners are asked to mute their microphones when they're not speaking and to verbally identify yourself prior to making any comments. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, this is Regina O. Jackson, Planning Administrative Assistant. I will now confirm that all members of the Planning Commission are present and can hear me by calling the row. Commissioners, when I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Present.
Commissioner Thompson?
Present.
Commissioner Youngblood?
Present.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Present.
Commissioner G?
Present.
Commissioner Coleman? Six members of the Planning Commission are present. This public meeting of the Planning Commission is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Northam's March 12th, 2020 executive order due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth given the outbreak of COVID-19. A quorum of the Commission is not physically present in the meeting location, but members have joined remotely. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted on the city's Planning Department's webpage with agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will be recorded and feature public comment. Even if members of the public do not provide comment, participants are advised that people may be listening who do not provide comment and those persons are not required to identify themselves. For this meeting, Planning Commission is convening by video conference via Microsoft Teams app as posted on the city's website, identifying how the public may join.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Commissioners, before you have the minutes of the August 18th, 2020 public hearing, do any commissioners have any corrections or changes to the minutes? If so, please state your name before stating the changes. If there aren't any changes, we're in need of a motion to approve the minutes. Commissioners are asked to mute your microphone when you're not speaking and to verbally identify yourself prior to speaking. Commissioners, before you make your motion, please identify yourself. The chair is in need of a motion.
This is Peter Youngblood. I make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
This is Akasio G. I second the motion.
Madam Secretary, we have a motion and a second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the August 18th, 2020 public hearing. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Youngblood?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner G?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman? The minutes are approved by a vote of six to zero. Announcements of future meetings and conferences. Please note that our next scheduled public hearing is Tuesday, October 6th, 2020 at 1:30 PM. The public hearing will be held in the Microsoft Teams platform via video conference. Items reviewed today will be presented to City Council for action at their October 13th or October 27th, 2020 virtual meeting as otherwise noted. We also ask that you mute your microphone so you are not speaking and to verbally identify yourself to make any comments. Our first public hearing items, Z-20-01-05. Harry Milner requests the rezoning of 3509 Townpoint Road from high-density urban residential URH to neighborhood mixed-use NMU to combine the property with 3507 Townpoint Road, of which is zoned neighborhood mixed-use NMU for a medical building or flex office space. The property is further described as Tax Map 829 Parcel 1. Staff Coordinator is Stacy Porter. With the staff coordinator for this application, please come forward and present your application at this time.
Yes, good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
This is Stacy Porter, Senior Planner with the Planning Department. I'll provide a brief overview of the applicant's request. The applicant's requested medical office building or flex office space were not by right land uses in the current high-density urban residential zoning district. Therefore, a rezoning request was necessary. I've cross-hatched the subject parcel on the map to the left of the slide. The applicant is requesting to rezone this parcel to neighborhood mixed use and combine it with the adjacent parcel to the east, which the applicant currently owns. The subject property is approximately .8 acre in size, is forested and vacant of site improvement. I'd like to make a clarification from what was listed in the staff report. The property is not currently accessible by vehicle. It is bordered by the property at 3507 Townpoint Road to the east and Silver Maple Drive to the west. I'll now provide an overview of the surrounding land uses. To the north is a strip shopping center and the Department of Motor Vehicles on Fifth and Parkway. Both parcels are zoned neighborhood mixed-use NMU. To the east on Townpoint Road is a strip shopping center, also zoned to the north. NMU. To the south on Townpoint Road is the Preston Trail Apartments in the city of Chesapeake. And to the west are Kirkland Forest Apartments on Silver Maple Drive, zoned high-density urban residential URH. And I hope you all can hear me and feel like this is feedback. The applicant has provided a conceptual layout plan, which combines the subject parcel of the rezoned and the adjacent parcel at 3507 Townpoint Road. The combined parcel is the intersection of Townpoint Road. This conceptual plan, entitled Conceptual Design 1, provides an office building to the rear of the property with surface parking accommodated on the remaining portion of the parcel. Both conceptual plans provide for a 6,500 square foot office building for the flex office space or medical office space. Now, this is the second conceptual plan that provides for an office building, but it's in the middle of the parcel and is surrounded by surface parking. The final layout plan would be evaluated during our site plan review process. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning request. Staff finds that the build one Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan's future land use map designates 3509 Townpoint Road for multiple potential development. A commercial land use would be appropriate for the parcel as well as the surrounding area is a mix of commercial and high-density residential development. In addition, the comprehensive plan indicates that the property is located in a compact center character area. A form of development is internally oriented around an internal parking lot or network of small streets. The plan recommends the following for this particular area. De-encased parking by locating the rear of a structure, provide central parking areas to increase green space, establish architectural consistency without creating monotony, configure the land use to allow the more interactive floor to be configured away from any adjacent residential development. The required site plan review process would allow staff to evaluate the applicant's final site layout plan against the comprehensive plan's recommendations. In addition, the applicant will be required to perform a minor subdivision to combine the subject property at 3509 Townpoint Road with 3507 Townpoint Road. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Porter. Commissioners, I will call each of your names to see if you have any additional questions for Mrs. Porter. I have none. Commissioner Thompson?
I have no questions.
Commissioner Youngblood?
Yes, did we get any input from the neighbors? I know that you sent a letter out to all the neighbors.
I sure did, Commissioner Youngblood, and I sent letters to the city manager at the city of Chesapeake as well as the City Planning Office in the city of Chesapeake, and we received no feedback.
Did any of the neighbors in Portsmouth give you any feedback?
No, they did not.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Thaxton?
No, sir, I have no questions.
Commissioner G?
No questions at this time.
Commissioner Youngblood? I mean, Commissioner Coleman?
Hi, yes, I do have a question for Ms. Porter. I'm looking at you indicated that parcels have to be combined. Are there any?
Commissioner Coleman, this is Jill, your reporter. Can you scoot closer to your microphone?
Certainly, is that better?
A little bit.
Um, I know that you indicated that there was going to be a subdivision to create the two parcels to get or combine the two parcels. As they're showing now, which is just a conceptual plan, are they going to need to have to go to zoning for any specific requirements like Board of Zoning Appeals?
Oh, that's a great question, Commissioner Coleman. No, they would not have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. We'll handle the minor subdivision right here in the Planning Department. But thank you, good question.
Before I move on, Madam Secretary, someone continues to mute my microphone. Who's doing that?
I'm sorry, that was myself. We were getting a lot of feedback from your microphone while Stacy was presenting.
From my microphone?
Yes.
Madam Secretary.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, we will now begin the public hearing on Z-20-05. Citizens will be called upon to provide comments or questions and are asked to verbally identify yourself prior to making comments and to mute your microphone when you're not speaking. Will the applicant for Z-20-05 come forward to provide any additional information or comments? State your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak.
Good afternoon. My name is Harry Milner, and I'm the applicant on the rezoning application for 3509 Townpoint Road. My address is 1016 Red Bay Lane in Chesapeake, Virginia, 23322. I represent the owner of 3509 Townpoint Road, which is a company named Indian River Road Properties. Just as a little background on Indian River Road Properties, we are a small property development and management company with properties in several of the South Side cities. In 2018, we completed construction of a 10,000 square foot retail center in Portsmouth, Virginia, which is located at 3525 Townpoint Road and is located right next to the subject property of 3509 Townpoint Road. 3509 Townpoint Road is zoned UR-H and is a small wooded lot that has been vacant for many, many years. We also own the 3507 Townpoint Road lot, which is right next to 3509, and that is a smaller vacant lot. At one time, there was a house that was being used as an insurance office and it has a business on the lot for 3507 Townpoint Road. We have since demolished that residence and it is now a vacant lot. As stated in the rezoning application, these two properties individually have very little chance of being developed to the highest and best use. And therefore, we'd like to combine these two properties into one in order to create a parcel of land approximately 1.066 acres in size. In order to do this, the two properties need to have the same zoning, and we are requesting that 3509 Townpoint Road be rezoned to NMU, which is the same zoning as 3507 Townpoint Road. Once the rezoning process is completed, we would take the necessary steps in conjunction with the city to develop the property as outlined within the application. Those are the comments that I have at this time.
Thank you. Commissioners, I will call each of your names if you have any questions for Mr. Milner. You can express those now. I have none. Commissioner Thompson?
I have no questions.
Commissioner Youngblood?
I have no questions.
Commissioner Thaxton?
No questions.
Commissioner G?
No questions.
Commissioner Coleman?
I have no questions.
Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item Z-20-05. I have no registered speakers. If there is someone on the call who would like to address this application, you may do so at this time. Please press star six to unmute your mic, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Commissioners, is there any further discussion? If not, we are in need of a motion and a second. Commissioners, please make a motion, but also stating your name prior to making the motion in a second.
Sherri Thaxton. I'd like to make a motion to approve Z-20-05.
We have, is there a second?
Akasio G. I second the motion.
Madam Secretary, we have a motion and a second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion and a second to approve Z-20-05. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Youngblood?
Yes.
Commissioner G?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
This item is approved by a vote of six to zero. Our next item, CA-20-01, Citywide. The city of Portsmouth is proposing to amend City Code, Chapter 40.1, zoning ordinance to add casino gaming establishment to Section 40.1 through 8.3. Definitions to modify, Table 40.1, 40.1A. Use table to permit a casino gaming establishment by use permit and to establish a new Section 40.1 through 3.7D. Entertainment overlay district to authorize the creation of an entertainment overlay district. The staff coordinator is Julie Chop. With the staff coordinator for this application, please come forward and present your application at this time.
Good afternoon, Planning Commissioners. This is Julie Chop, Planner 1 with the city of Portsmouth. This presentation will provide details on the proposed code amendments to the city zoning ordinance that were requested by City Council in order to provide a legal process for establishing a casino gaming establishment in Portsmouth. Next slide, please. I will begin by providing some background. In December of 2013 and again in January of 2017, City Council expressed its support for proposed legislation that would amend the Code of Virginia to allow casino gaming in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Once more, on October 23rd, 2018, City Council adopted a resolution indicating their support for amending the Virginia Code to permit casino gaming. The city cited the heavy financial burden on Portsmouth and its residents caused by tolls on the downtown and midtown tunnels and the non-taxable property of the Virginia International Gateway Terminal as reasons for supporting the development of a casino gaming establishment within the city. In 2019, the Virginia General Assembly passed Senate Bill 1126, authorizing casino gaming in the Commonwealth in certain cities that meet outlined criteria and that passed a referendum in the city on the question of allowing casino gaming in the city. The legalization of casino gaming was contingent upon a review by the Joint Legislative Audit Commission on casino gaming laws in other states and in an evaluation of the Commonwealth's potential for casino gaming. The EDA identified the Victory Site as a potential site for a casino in Portsmouth and successfully marketed the site to Rush Street Gaming LLC. In July of 2019, City Council and the EDA authorized a cooperative agreement that instructed staff to take necessary actions to permit an entertainment district that could include casino gaming. Also in 2019, the city of Portsmouth commissioned Meister Economic Consulting to conduct a market study for a casino in Portsmouth. The study concluded that the Victory Site had the potential to be a successful location for a casino gaming establishment due to its direct access to Interstate 264, proximity to area amenities, and ample vacant area for development. In November 2019, the city and the EDA entered into a memorandum of understanding with Rush Street Gaming LLC as the developer of a casino gaming establishment within an entertainment overlay district. Next slide, please. Virginia Senate Bill 36 and House Bill 4 were adopted during the 2020 Virginia General Assembly session and signed into law by the governor. The legislation named the city of Portsmouth as one of five host cities eligible for development of a gaming establishment. On March 26th, 2020, City Council adopted a resolution designating Rush Street Gaming LLC and its affiliate Portsmouth Gaming Holdings LLC as the preferred casino gaming operator for the city of Portsmouth. Starting in the beginning, in the early months of 2020, staff began to draft the appropriate zoning code amendments to the city zoning ordinance to allow the casino gaming use in the city. Next slide, please. I will now discuss the process of how a casino gaming establishment would be established in Portsmouth. Today, Planning Commission will make a recommendation on the code amendments to City Council. Code Amendment 2001 has been fast-tracked to the September 8th City Council meeting for the first reading, and on September 22nd, City Council will decide to adopt the proposed code amendments. Next, an approval of the local referendum as part of the general election on November 3rd will be required. The next step would be for the applicant to rezone the Victory Site to the High Density Mixed Use zoning district. The applicant would also have to rezone the Victory Site to the entertainment overlay district in order for the casino gaming establishment use to be permitted. In addition, the applicant will need to obtain a use permit for a casino gaming establishment. Steps three, four, and five on this slide can be done concurrently by the applicant. Next slide, please. The proposed code amendments to the city's zoning ordinance are to add the definition from the state code of casino gaming establishment to the general definition section of the zoning ordinance. Also, to modify the use table to allow a casino gaming establishment in the MUH zoning district with a use permit. Please note that a casino gaming establishment will only be permitted within an entertainment overlay district. The proposed code amendment will also establish a new section to create an entertainment overlay district that will be superimposed over the MUH zoning district. Next slide, please. The definition within the state code states that casino gaming establishment means the premises upon which lawful casino gaming is authorized and licensed as provided in Chapter 41 of Title 58.1 of the Code of Virginia. Casino gaming establishment does not include a riverboat or similar vessel. Next slide, please. This slide shows the added use to the use table as only permitted with a use permit, and the asterisk references that a casino gaming establishment must be within an entertainment overlay district and as authorized by the local referendum as required by state law. Next slide, please. A rezoning application for an entertainment overlay district must include a conceptual master plan. The master plan includes the district boundaries, the location and size of development areas, a development phasing plan that describes the sequence of development within the district, elevations of the buildings, parking locations and quantity, a proposed conceptual landscaping, exterior lighting, and signage plan, location and amount of open space that aside, a TIA to include a B.527 for the Victory Site due to its proximity to the interstate, and any proposed modifications to the zoning ordinance standards. Next slide, please. The proposed code amendment establishing an entertainment overlay district includes standards for the development of distinctive uses and allows flexibility to accommodate the special characteristics of the specific uses within the entertainment overlay district. An entertainment overlay district does not necessarily have to include a casino gaming establishment, and the proposed amendment mandates that the area for an entertainment overlay district shall be at least 25 acres in size. After a district has been created by City Council, additional contiguous land may be added to it following the same process by which the district was originally established. The maximum building height in an entertainment overlay district permits a higher maximum building height than is permitted in MUH, allowing buildings to be a maximum of 200 feet high and also allows an applicant to request a higher maximum building height as part of a use permit application. Okay, the entertainment overlay district allows the same uses as identified in the use table for MUH with the exception of a number of prohibited uses listed in the amendment. The additional prohibited uses are not permitted due to the potential for conflict with approved uses. The entertainment overlay district allows a higher density maximum than is permitted in the base MUH zoning district, allowing 60 units per acre, and in addition, an applicant may request a higher maximum density as part of a use permit application. Next slide, please. Staff conducted research on parking requirements for casino gaming establishments in localities with similar characteristics to Portsmouth to identify an appropriate off-street parking standard. For uses within a casino gaming establishment, required off-street parking shall be provided at a ratio of not less than .75 parking spaces for each gaming position. Should a hotel or motel be incorporated, there shall additionally be not less than one parking space for each hotel room. And should a convention center be incorporated, there shall additionally be not less than one parking space per 500 square feet of convention space. The code amendment does provide several methods to modify the required parking standards. Development in an entertainment overlay district, in particular casino gaming establishments, will have unique needs for exterior lighting that require flexibility and would not typically be permitted in other areas of the city. As such, several exceptions to the exterior lighting section of the zoning ordinance are permitted, including upwardly directed lighting, permitted, including upwardly directed lighting, internally illuminated awnings or canopies, and measuring maximum illumination levels at the exterior boundaries of the district rather than measuring at each property boundary. In addition, requests to modify the exterior lighting standards are permitted within the code amendment. Casino gaming establishments will also have unique needs in terms of signage. The code amendment for an entertainment overlay district allows off-premises signs within the district, and the amendment also allows several processes to modify the signage standards. Next slide, please. Any major alterations to the adopted master plan require an amendment to the master plan, and adoption shall follow the same process by which the overlay was established. In an effort to provide flexibility for minor deviations to the master plan that may arise during the development process, specified deviations listed within the code amendment can be approved administratively. Staff recommends approval of the proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance to permit the casino gaming establishment use with a use permit in the MUH zoning district and to establish an entertainment overlay district to accommodate entertainment uses such as a casino gaming establishment. This concludes my presentation, and I will stand by for any questions from the commissioners.
Thank you, Ms. Chopp. Commissioners, I will call each of your names to determine if you have any questions of Mrs. Chopp. I have none. Commissioner Thompson?
No questions.
Commissioner Youngblood?
No questions.
Commissioner Thaxton?
No questions.
Commissioner G.
I don't have any questions, but one statement I wanted to make as we move towards discussion on this is just as a reminder that the mission of this commission is to make recommendations to the city council on matters related to comprehensive and current planning and land use development, not any personal moral or any other such items with regards to the casino. So just wanted to remind everyone what our purpose is as we look at this casino development.
Commissioner Coleman?
I have no questions at this time.
Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, we will now begin the public hearing on Item CA-20-01. Citizens will be called upon to provide comments or questions and are asked to verbally identify yourself prior to making comments and to mute your microphone when you are not speaking. Will the applicant for CA-20-01 come forward to provide any additional information or comments? State your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak.
So the city is the applicant on this item, so there will be an external applicant.
Okay, so we've heard that. Okay, Mr. Chairman?
And we do have some registered speakers.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on Item CA-20-01, and we do have a few registered speakers. Meg, I will let you coordinate that in order of the calls that we have received for the people that-
We've got Steve Romine. If you will unmute yourself, and you'll have up to five minutes to speak.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me, Chairman?
We can hear you.
Okay. Good afternoon, Chairman Williams and members of the Planning Commission for the record. My name is Steve Romine. I'm a local attorney, and I represent Rush Street Gaming LLC and its affiliate Portsmouth Gaming Holdings LLC. Just briefly wanted to speak in support of this action. Also, wanted to thank the city staff for all their work in connection with these amendments. And we would appreciate the Planning Commission recommending approval to city council. Also have on the line today Mike Tobin with Rush Street from Chicago who may be able to answer any questions, but we appreciate your support and look forward to moving on to city council. So I'll stand by for any questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any additional speakers on Item CA-20-01?
We have Mark Gadoli-Yatrowski registered to speak. Mark, if you would like to unmute yourself and speak on this item, you'll have up to five minutes to provide comments.
Thank you. Can you all hear me clearly?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. I'm Mark Gadoli-Yatrowski. I reside in the Sterling Point neighborhood of Portsmouth, and I am speaking in opposition to the adoption of this item. As you note in the introduction to the changes that are being proposed to our zoning code, council has, city council, and that is several city councils, have pursued a variety of actions to move this project forward. However, at no time was there a public mandate for city council to do so. We have had no referendum on this item. The referendum is ahead of us in November if the legal requirements for getting that item on the ballot are completed. So the city has expended taxpayer money in a variety of activities related to this without a public mandate to do so. I consider that an abuse of authority. This set of changes would only be necessary if the public chooses to ratify the proposal to allow casino gaming in Portsmouth. That is something to be determined at the ballot box on November 3rd. So I am averse to moving forward with the adoption of these zoning changes without direction from the people of the City of Portsmouth with regard to the acceptability of the proposal overall. You have put considerable energy into developing these proposals. I am astonished at all the individual considerations that are involved, including building heights, density changes, and signage alterations from our normal business plan in the City of Portsmouth for similar such items. All of these issues should be part of the public's consideration of whether we really want to do this kind of change in the City of Portsmouth. My fear is that none of this will actually come to light in a timely way to have a thorough discussion of the merits and the deficits of each of the changes proposed in conjunction with having an entertainment district and ultimately a casino. So for those reasons, I am opposed to adoption of this particular planning item. Thank you very much, and I welcome any questions from commissioners.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on Item CA-20-01. If there is anyone else on the call who would like to address this application, you may come forward, give your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Commissioners, is there any further discussion? If so, please state your name before speaking.
Chairman Williams, this is Commissioner G. I did have one statement in respect to what Ms. Yatrowski had stated. I think, counter to your thoughts, I think it's a positive thing that this is being brought before the public forum and the public demand, because this gives us more to consider when we're at the ballot box. Had these items, had we voted and the public made their statements on this at the box, and then these happened afterwards, that could be more problematic than this all being upfront. So I mean, that's just one thought I had and something to consider. This gives us more to consider or more to think about when we're looking at this in November.
Commissioners, is there any further discussion? If so, please state your name. If not, we are in need of a motion and a second. Commissioners, before making the motion, please identify yourself.
This is Peter Youngblood. I recommend approval of CA-20-01.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
This is Sherri Thaxton. I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion and a second to approve CA-20-01. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Youngblood?
Yes.
Commissioner G?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
This item is approved by a vote of 6 to 0. Our next item, CBE-20-02, Hatton Point Estates. Brandon Sheridan requests a Chesapeake Bay exception for an after-the-fact shed in the Resource Protection Area's seaward 50-foot buffer at 4521 Templar Drive. The property is Zoned General Residential GR and is further described as Tax Map 739, Parcel 55. The comprehensive plan recommends low-to-medium density, single-family residential development for the property. The staff coordinator is Stacy Porter. Will the staff coordinator for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
Good afternoon again, commissioners. Stacy Porter, Senior Planner with the Planning Department, and I'll provide a brief overview of the applicant's request. I've cross-hatched the subject parcel on the map on the left of the slide. The property is 0.35 acres in size and contains a one-story, single-family dwelling constructed in 1979. The parcel itself predates the Chesapeake Bay ordinance. According to the ordinance, the exception process is the procedure for approving accessory structures within the Resource Protection Area. The adjacent photo on the slide shows the location of the after-the-fact shed in the background. The shed is approximately 160 square feet in size. The shed was purchased in December of 2019. According to the applicant, an attempt was made to determine if a building permit was required by utilizing the city's website. Unfortunately, the applicant did not acquire a complete determination of permitting requirements. No building permit was required. However, a zoning compliance permit was required. The property is located in the Hatton Point Estates neighborhood and is surrounded to the north, south, and west by single-family residential development. Lily Creek is located to the immediate east. I've included a GIS map, and it's on the right of the slide, that shows the property to be fully encompassed by the Resource Protection Area. It should also be noted that the entire rear yard is located in the seaward 50-foot buffer of that Resource Protection Area. This is the submitted survey. The shed is located on the right-hand side of the rear property, and I've outlined it in red. The applicant's supplemental mentions that he required a location for his lawn equipment to eliminate having the accumulation of gas fumes in the home's attached garage. Aside from the 160-square-foot shed, the rear yard is devoid of other accessory structures or site improvements. As part of the code mandated water quality impact assessment, the applicant was required to provide one planting unit to compensate for the 160 square feet of completed land disturbance. The planting unit is provided on this survey and includes one river birch tree, two dogwood trees, and three yawpon holly shrubs. The plants were selected from the Virginia Buffer Modification and Mitigation Manual. Planning staff recommends the approval of the applicant's request. The entire rear yard of the applicant's property is located in the seaward 50-foot buffer. There is no opportunity to reduce the encroachment or relocate outside of the seaward buffer. Though the applicant did not acquire a complete determination of permitting requirements, an attempt was made to research the need for a permit. Staff confirmed that the shed is below the size threshold to require a building permit. If the exception request is approved by Planning Commission, the shed must comply with the local floodplain ordinance as the property is located in the regulated floodplain. And this concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Porter. Commissioners, I will call each of your names to see if you have any questions of Mrs. Porter. I have none. Commissioner Thompson?
I just have one clarification, Stacy. I believe you said that this is the only process through which someone can get permission from the city really to build within the RPA. Is that correct?
Yes. For accessory structures, any accessory structure, you have to get the exception, the Chesapeake Bay exception. Yes.
What are some other examples of accessory structures?
Absolutely. A swimming pool, gazebo, oh goodness, anything detached from the home.
Okay.
Garage.
Thank you. I was just curious. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Youngblood?
Yes, Ms. Porter, did you get any comments from the neighbors?
Oh, that's a great question. Actually, I did. It's the next-door neighbor. If you look, looking at the slide straight ahead, look to the right, the house next door, I did get a call from the neighbors. They may be on the call, I don't know. They may be calling in, but they were concerned that the shed blocked their view of the creek, and they said they weren't really against him having a shed, the applicant having a shed, but they're asking if they could move it. And I, of course, could not comment. That's nothing that staff would get involved with, but that was the only concern that I received.
I have another question. What sort of foundation was put down for the shed?
Actually, it's elevated on blocks. It's not on a foundation.
Okay, so really, they didn't disturb the land so much as cover it up? Is that correct?
Yes, I guess in a technical way, it's more covering the land, but unfortunately, we still have to count it.
Right, I understand. I just wanted to get some idea of how much of a permanent structure or semi-permanent structure we're really talking about. Not to denigrate it at any point, but in my mind, this is no worse than having a doghouse in your backyard. It's certainly not like he poured a slab and built a brick house back there. Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Thaxton?
No questions.
Commissioner G?
No questions.
Commissioner Coleman?
No questions.
Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, we will now begin the public hearing on Item CBE-20-02. Citizens will be called upon to provide comments or questions and are asked to verbally identify yourself prior to making comments and to mute your microphones when you are not speaking. Will the applicant for CBE-20-02 please come forward to provide any additional information or comments? State your name. any additional information or comments. State your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak.
Brandon, make sure you dial star six on your phone to unmute.
Hi, this is Brandon Sheeran, and I'm the current owner of 4521 Templar Drive, and I am in the process of trying to get a, I guess, a variance for the accessory structure in my backyard. Just like, to recap what Stacy had said earlier, in late December, I was in need of a utility shed to store my lawn equipment and other lawn items, I guess you could say. And I went on the city's website, checked to see if there was a building permit that would be required, and it was not. So then I went ahead and purchased the shed, had it delivered in early January, and they, it's built on a skid, so it was already prefabbed. They brought it back and put it on like concrete landscaping blocks. So no grass or bushes, trees were removed to accommodate the shed. It was elevated approximately two foot above the ground, and two weeks later, I received a stop work permit and informed me that I was in violation of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act, which before this, I did not know anything about it. It was not disclosed to me when I bought the house three years ago. So I kind of got educated quickly on it and noticed that I can't have anything, you know, within the 50-foot and 100-foot areas. And so I got in contact with Stacy. She's been really helpful with me through this whole process. Had to get the yard resurveyed to show those 50-foot and 100-foot clearances and show where these planning units that are required to accommodate this, this shed, which I'm more than willing to do in order to hopefully keep the shed in the, in the location that it's at. And I also spoke with Meg, I believe, a week or two ago in regards to it being in a flood zone where I would have to raise it an additional foot, a foot and a half, and then add restraints to keeping it anchored to the earth to prevent it from floating away. But that's all I have, and I appreciate everyone's time.
Thank you, Mr. Sharon. Commissioners, I will call each of your names to see if you have any additional questions of Mr. Sharon. I have none. Commissioner Thompson?
I have one question. Did you say it was already two feet elevated above the ground?
Yes, ma'am. My, my yard slopes severely. So at the, the point closest to the, the water, it's roughly two foot above ground. So no part of the shed is actually touching the ground. They're all, it's all on landscaping blocks. So at the point closest to the water, it's probably sitting on five blocks, and the part closest to the street, it's sitting on one block.
I understand. And, and you were told that, to be in compliance with the flood zone, you had to elevate it more?
Yes, ma'am. Meg, I think she told me that it needed to be three foot, I believe, above the ground. And I spoke with Doug, the, in permits, building code official, and he told me I would need to add four restraints, something like you would find on a mobile home to keep it anchored. Basically, just, he said, just add one in each corner.
I understand that. We, are you still able to use the shed when it is elevated that high?
Um, I, I guess I would prefer it not to be that high. I mean, because, you know, then you're looking at threes to three and a half foot off the ground. I mean, that's, it's kind of, it's kind of up there. Right, exactly. You know, and, and also, in regards to the planning units, my survey doesn't show that I have three trees back there. They're, oh man, they're right there on my left side of my neighbor's yard, and it doesn't reflect that, but I didn't know if that would be in account to those planning units, or would I still need to, to add the tree. I mean, I'm not opposed to the, the two dogwoods and the shrubs, but that, that river birch tree, it gets some size on it.
That's definitely a question that Ms. Porter will have to work with you on.
Okay, that's fine.
I have no other questions at this time.
Commissioner Youngblood?
I have no questions.
Commissioner Thaxton?
I have no questions.
Commissioner G?
I have no questions.
Commissioner Coleman?
Uh, no questions at this time.
Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on CBE-20-02. I have no registered speakers. If there is someone on the call who would like to address this application, you may come forward at this time, press star six to unmute your mic, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak.
Hello, this is Mark Agudalagutrowski again. I thought I had put in a reservation for this item as well, but I'll go ahead and speak to it under the, the general public hearing guidelines. My, my neighborhood is the Sterling Point neighborhood of Portsmouth, and the item that I was concerned about was, was pretty well addressed in the applicant's presentation when he mentioned that Ms. Pittenger had informed him that he needed to elevate the structure three feet above the ground. From when I worked on the floodplain management task force a few years ago, it was my understanding that at that point in time, around 2015, Portsmouth had a freeboard requirement for, for homes, I believe, of 18 inches, and I had heard subsequently that it was being increased due to sea level rise concerns to three feet, but I wasn't sure if that applied to accessory structures as well. So I, I feel a little bit better about knowing that this will be elevated because as a shed for lawn equipment and essentially other, other items that you might need for lawn care, such as fertilizer and fuel for your lawn equipment, such as gasoline, in the event of a flood, you would not want the water, as it receded, taking out harmful chemicals and substances as, as it did recede. So I'm happy to hear that, that there is that amount of protection for the waterways around the structure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on the call who would like to address this application? You may come forward, state your name and your address, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Commissioners, is there any further discussion? If so, please state your name. If not, we are in need of a motion and a second. Commissioners, before making a motion, please identify yourself.
This is Commissioner G. I move for acceptance of CBE-20-02.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Commissioner Thompson, a second.
Madam Secretary, we have a motion and a second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion and a second to approve CBE-20-02. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Youngblood?
Yes.
Commissioner G?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
This item is approved by a vote of six to zero. Our next item, SUB-20-016, Woodland Park. Mark H. Ricketts of AES Consulting Engineers, agent for the Portsmouth Economic Development Authority, EDA, requests to subdivide 31.39 acres of undeveloped land into 197 townhouse residential lots. The property is zoned urban residential, high-density URH. The comprehensive plan recommends mixed residential development for this area. The property is further described as Tax Map 517, parcel two. Staff coordinator is Sam Okafor. With the staff, will this application, please come forward?
Good afternoon, planning commissioners. This is Samson Okafor, Principal Planner with the City of Portsmouth. The property is directly behind Tidewater Community College. It is off McLean Street. The property is 31.4 acres. Of this, 10 acres is in, is in wetland, and it should be protected. It involves 197 townhouse lots. The owner of the Portsmouth Economic Development Authority is the owner. This also involves the development of six new streets, two of them coming off McLean Street. The, the plan as submitted met all the minor, or major subdivision requirements, so the planning staff is recommending approval. We have few, about five conditions, which is on the staff report, and I believe that the, the representative, Mark Ricketts, is also here to talk to you about this. We are recommending approval.
Commissioners, as I call each of your names, just tell me if you have any questions for Mr. Okafor. I have none. Commissioner Thompson?
So, I have one question. So then this, from here, would go to site plan approval?
Yes. The next step is site plan. Subdivision plan does not go to, to the, to the city council. It only stops as planning commission.
I understand. Thank you.
Commissioner Youngblood?
Since we've looked at this a number of times in the past, I think we've covered any questions I would have had, so I have none at this time.
Commissioner Thaxton?
No questions.
Commissioner G?
I have no questions at this time.
Commissioner Coleman?
I have no questions.
Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, we will now begin the public hearing on item SUB-20-016. Citizens will be called upon to provide comments or questions and are asked to verbally identify yourself prior to making comments and to mute your microphone when you're not speaking. Will the applicant for SUB-20-016 come forward to provide any additional information or comments? Please state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak.
Mark, go ahead and unmute yourself, and you can give your comments.
Good afternoon. This is Mark Ricketts with AES Consulting Engineers. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, terrific. Again, for the record, my name is Mark Ricketts. I'm with AES Consulting Engineers. Our, our office is located at 816 Greenbrier Circle in Chesapeake. I would like to correct one small thing, simply for the record, is that I'm the agent for the contract purchaser of the property, which is the Miller Group, who is working with economic development as the current owner of the property. So I just wanted to go ahead and make sure that I corrected that information. I appreciate Mr. Okafor's summary of the project. Again, as, as you well know, this property was rezoned, including a condition of use permit earlier this year, and we've been working with the staff to develop the project in its current form, which complies with the exhibits that were shown to Planning Commission and City Council previously. I just wanted to be on the call to make sure that I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. I've reviewed the five conditions that are specified in the document. They're pretty straightforward, that the subdivision plan needs to be in general compliance with the preliminary subdivision plan, which you see. The developer's responsible for basically installing water sewer drainage. The developer's responsible for any necessary rerouting of utility lines that may be required. Any revisions to the subdivision made through the subdivision review process shall be submitted to the Planning Department for consistency of review, and that water and sewer plans shall be approved by Public Utilities. We're, we're perfectly comfortable with all those conditions as part of the standard development process. Mr. Okafor also provided me with information that said that the planning director can approve minor changes as needed, and, and we're more than happy to work with the Planning Department on that. So anyway, again, I will simply, again, you're familiar with the project, but I, I will simply stand by and be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, I will call each of your names if you have any questions of Mr. Ricketts. I have none. Commissioner Thompson?
I have no questions.
Commissioner Youngblood?
No questions.
Commissioner Thaxton?
I have no questions.
Commissioner G?
I have no questions as well.
Commissioner Coleman?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item SUB-20-016. I have no registered speakers. If there is someone on the call who would like to address this application, you may do so at this time. Press star six to unmute your mic, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Commissioners, is there any further discussion? If not, we are in need of a motion and a second. Commissioners, please state your name when making the motion, and for this item, there are conditions.
Hi, this is Donna Coleman. I recommend that we approve SUB-20-016 with conditions listed.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Sherri Thaxton, second.
Madam Secretary, we have a motion and a second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion and a second to approve SUB-20-016. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Youngblood?
Yes.
Commissioner G?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
This item is approved by a vote of six to zero with conditions.
Madam Secretary, I believe that concludes our agenda for today. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Commissioners, are there any further business that we need to discuss?
I had, this is Donna Coleman. I did have one item just to bring up. There was, I guess, a scheduled council Planning Commission joint meeting. I'm assuming that that was going to be tabled now. It was supposed to be held in September.
Mr. Bowen, can you speak to that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd be glad to. At one time, there was some discussion on the code amendment about whether or not the city would want to have the Planning Commission and the, and the City Council, the joint meeting. It's a process that is permitted by state code. It's a process that is permitted by state code. It's not used commonly, but it is used. However, as we looked more at the process and the timeframes we're in, we felt the process would be better served. And this is really primarily looking at the casino code amendment. The process would better serve by letting the Planning Commission handle theirs separately today and then letting this move forward to City Council next week, rather than putting the two together. So, well, that, that type of a joint meeting was looked at, was ultimately decided not to go in that, in that direction.
Commissioners, are there any further discussions for today? Hearing none. Mr. Baldwin, is there any further discussion?
No, sir. Just like to thank everybody for their work, hard work and attention on today's meeting. And we look forward to seeing everyone in, I guess, October.
And I want to thank all of the commissioners. The more we do this, the better we get at it. Hearing none. Madam Secretary, this meeting is adjourned.